Let's kick it off. Hi, everyone. Welcome to our last town hall for this month and the first one for Pierre. So as probably some of you heard, he's back and he has some stories to tell. My name is Simona and as most of you know, I'm Hospitable's community manager. And I'll give you a quick run of show as usual. So before we kick things off, I just want to quickly remind you that our town halls are being recorded. And you'll be able to listen to them on our Hospitable YouTube channel and also on the Clubhouse app. So first we'll get started with some company updates and then we'll let you know what's going on with the business. And around half of the session will be open for a Q and A session. So when the time comes, please raise your hand through the app and we will invite people on stage so you can ask your questions. Please, please remember to be muted when you're on stage, but you're not speaking, just as a courtesy to others. And in case you're not comfortable with being on stage or you don't want to be recorded for whatever reason, you can always ask your questions in the chat function where we have Zach help us escalate some of those questions and answer they like directly in the in the chat. So without further ado, I will give it to Pierre who shares some company updates and some personal updates.
Yeah, the personal update is a bit heavy on this one. Yeah, so I became a dad while I was away. I'm the proud dad now of Clara, who was born on the 2nd of July, born 3.6 kilos, that's seven pounds, 15 ounces, and 50 centimeters, which is 19.6 inches. Thank you, Matthew, for helping me for the conversion into those imperial metrics. Everything has been, yeah, pretty much a trip for now. But no, everything is great. Clara is absolutely amazing. She sleeps a lot and that's really a dad's daughter in that regard. And yeah, growing really well. And yeah, it's kind of, I still do not understand why basically parents do not. And I think I'm becoming one of those people that basically kind of stop talking about basically their kid. But it's obviously fairly new. And yeah, I cannot help but imagine, you know, what I would like to do right now is actually putting a big board with a picture of her, a picture of the baby saying, "This is my baby and I'm so happy, I'm so great." Which is definitely just my own position and I don't want to shove it onto everyone's. I appreciate those things are more like personal and private. But that's, that's been quite exhilarating for the past, for the past three weeks nonetheless. I'm super happy, of course, of coming back and it seems that having additions to the team is really the theme for us. It has been the theme for the past few weeks and the team has been absolutely amazing at organizing an incredible number of interviews to grow our team. And it seems like basically even though we took quite some time to get those recruiting operations rolling, we are now going to be definitely looking at increasing, growing our team size by 50% within the month of August. So that's a tremendous effort. And in particular, what I want to say as well is that we are really extremely selective. When we have someone joining our team and we're really looking for, for doors that can work collaboratively in a distributed setup and are extremely talented, extremely talented and can bring a lot of value to, to the, to the team, to the product, to the company. So we have a lot of recruitments and this starts really with support. I will let basically Matthew talk a little bit about it, but what I can say is that we're having so two more colleagues that have joined or will join us, including our first hire in Australia. We are also creating a new product team. I think that we, so we have Anmol, who may, I will actually need to send him an offer tomorrow. I have three offer calls back to back. So Anmol is based in India and in Dubai. It will be our first product hire and it's going to be particularly helping us work on optimizing everything around onboarding or education for our product and identifying opportunities with the existing products. So that is more likely to be the person dealing with future requests on the existing part of the product and expanding on it for basically what will be within the scope of natural iteration. We also have an hire in a late-stage process for recruiting for a lead PM, for a lead product manager role that will be particularly looking at everything direct. So for direct bookings, payment processing and basically helping us unlock a new level of growth, a new level of growth with a new product expansion. So this is particularly interesting because the product team currently is, I mean, I'm the product team. It obviously is a limitation on the ability of the team to, to keep working on making great product. So I'm particularly happy of having this situation on blocks very soon for everyone. We're also going to boost our engineering team that obviously that's particularly important for everyone. It doesn't matter if we have more people to tell us what the product should be like if there are no people working on executing that product vision in particular. So we have Stefan and Boris. Stefan is based in Germany and Boris is based in Poland, that will both be joining us actually as principal software engineer. We've been looking for extremely senior developers that can really tackle the, the top of the challenges on the engineering perspective that are met by our team and by our products. Also helping us coach and mentor existing developers to ensure that they are going to be on track with our product and engineering achievements. Still committed obviously to achieving great engineering within our team. Those are not managers, they're not going to run the pay time off for our team. They're really exclusively going to be working on contributing and optimizing the productivity of the team still. And we do have more people in late-stage processes for recruitment, one backend engineer, one frontend engineer. Another person, as I said, just focused on product roles and one marketing person. So again, that will be the first, that will be the first marketing hire times two. The second time we're having a marketing person to join our teams. A growth of 50% of the team in August. We will, we started the month of July at 21, will end August very likely with 30 and probably more than 30 to, to join our team. And that's really because of our continued growth as a business. We've been growing our revenue so far 25% per quarter. The revenue has been growing 25% per quarter. And we have been also extremely efficient in our growth. So for $10 that we invoice for our net profit. So we're currently really unblocking a capacity to hire more people to basically be able to reinvest that back into our product, into our growth, into our customers, of course. And that's the first item. So second thing I wanted to talk about, but that's probably not the most relevant in this time of town hall, but what I'm paying attention to especially in the past few weeks is really there's been a lot of consolidation going on. So a lot of acquisitions between alternative or competitors to Hospitable. Planet is a payment processing company and they've acquired Advancio, who is a PMS property management software that's definitely is more focused towards large property management companies. And just earlier today, Track, which is another property management software, and we know we have some customers in common with that company, has also been acquired, more like majority stake has been acquired by the same owners of the Dallas Cowboys, if I basically did that track. So a sports team that basically, the private equity firm behind that acquiring a PMS, acquiring another PMS. That's really giving an idea of the amount of interest of, from private equity for consolidation and so including like alternative companies or competitors to basically consolidate from the abundance of property management software and tools in this industry and to basically go big now that basically the industry is on a fast, as we covered very quickly. That also has an impact in terms of for Hospitable's in terms of its own fundraising efforts. That's not something that I spent definitely in light of recruitment work in the last few weeks. That's been definitely the priority has been on the recruitment. But yeah, there's been tremendous interest towards investing into Hospitable in recent weeks, especially from institutional investors. And so basically I would be looking forward to sharing more updates on that within two weeks, hopefully. It's a little bit more difficult for funds to invest in the company, in Hospitable, based on their, on the pre-size, based on their, basically on investor portal and their setup. It's very easy for customers to be investing and that's why we have 44 customers that basically have invested into Hospitable. It's a little bit more tricky to have institutional funds investing into that same instrument. But it's going to happen anyway because that's really to the advantage of those funds. So those are, that's basically all the updates that I can share with you. I'm looking forward to getting you back once we're on the Q and A. And for now, we'll just let Matthew, who is actually at the helm for the past three weeks during my paternity leave. And so thank you very much, Matthew, for holding the fort in my absence. I'm still able to be back, so that's perfect. And yeah, it seems like basically the team and the company is basically in a great move. What's, what's new, Matthew?
Oh, so very much, so very much. But yeah, man, making sure we're trying to keep that ship afloat, that's for sure. Big shoes to fill when you weren't here, but I appreciate the vote of confidence there. So, hey, everybody, we'll start off with some customer updates. You know, so my role here, I oversee sales, marketing and customer support. So we're going to get started with customer support. The, one of the exciting things that we've seen, we continually share with you are NPS. You know, it's truly something that we pay attention to and take a lot of stock into. NPS is at 60 since the last time we met, which is a jump of 15 points, which is absolutely phenomenal. Back on pace to where we want to be. The team's been focused on our consolidation week, making sure that we're responding quickly to some of the issues that have popped up. And we can see that in our elevated NPS score. And for those of you that aren't aware, net promoter score. So whenever you get that pop-up that says, "Hey, do you want to, would you recommend this to your friends on a scale of 1 to 10?" Go ahead and give that vote. That's something that companies are taking a look at. We really love to hear what you have to share. So by all means, let us know how you feel about the software and, and share any comments with us as well because we do go through those almost daily. Aside from that, we do have a new hire in APAC, Mike Williams. He actually started last night out of nowhere, had a offer call in the morning, had a job in the evening, absolutely unbelievable. So Mike's going to help us in our APAC team. He's based down in the Philippines, I believe in the Manila area. But he's, you know, going to be unlocking some more coverage for all of you US night owls out there and expanding our daytime international support. You know, Mike brings a ton of CS experience and he's day one already making some suggestions, asking some great questions. We're thrilled. We know our hosts are going to be in great hands with Mike. And as Pierre mentioned, Ethan's going to be joining Pierre on an offer call tomorrow. So Ethan is a hospitable host based down in the Gold Coast of Australia. We're excited to have him join and support all of our hospitable Aussies out there. With the CS side, we've also been toying around with some of the tools, some tools on Intercom, which is our main CS tool. Always looking for ways to be a bit more efficient, getting your questions answered quickly. You know, one of the challenges we face is that hosts don't always share the details that we need to properly research and properly take a look at the system. So we're trying some automations to get the information that we need faster to provide you with the absolute fastest resolution possible. And lastly, I have to give an absolutely huge shout out to our support team. You know, recently, summertime here in Europe, lots of vacation days, lots of sick days, some challenges with Verbo and they've been working so hard to deliver a great customer support experience, even with the increased volume and the lighter team. So they all work so hard each and every day. I couldn't be prouder in the way that they represent Hospitable. So a huge shout out, thank you so much to all of our CS reps. The company couldn't run without you, that's for sure. Now, on the sales side, so our revenue growth over the past 30 days, we've grown at 4.83%. Starting to, still growing, but definitely starting to slow down with the seasonality. Customer growth as well, 5.22% over the past 30 days. Still great numbers. They're slowing overall over the past 60, but last week we had 264 new free trials. Our all-time high is 277 in a week. So even with that slowdown, we still see spikes that come through, you know, every, every couple of weeks or so. And based on our history, that fluctuation is absolutely expected with the seasonality. We tend to slow down towards the end of summer and start a fall. Then growth will kick back in at the start of the new year, based on the past three years of history that we, you know, we review. And now on the marketing side, well, actually on sales updates too, what we, the sales team's been sharing, payment processing, payment processing, payment processing. Folks are really excited for more smart lock integrations. And that's fantastic because those are two things that we will be working on once we move past this consolidation week. Actually, remote lock is still being worked on and we're making great progress on that integration as well. Now, when it comes to the marketing front, last week we had an amazing hospitable host workshop where we highlight four of our experienced hospitable hosts. So you can hear their story directly on how other hosts have done it, how they've grown, how they scaled. We even had a host join us from Australia at like 4:00 AM. So thank you so much. We appreciate that, Dave. And we talked about a bunch of useful tips that can help them scale so that, you know, they, so that essentially, you know, growing your business, how they scaled, what are some of those things to pay attention to? You know, if you missed it, don't be sad. It is available on our YouTube channel along with all of our master classes, all of our hospitable hosts workshop. So go ahead, take a look, jump on YouTube, take a look at Hospitable and see all that great content we're sharing with you. 195 people attended and that was our most popular event yet. So kudos to the marketing team for, for getting the word out there. And again, thank you so much for our panel. And this month we have a hospitable masterclass planned with Leo Walton. He's one of the co-founders and the VP of Growth at SuperHawk. He's going to talk to us about trust, the value of guest screening and the all-important damage protection. So if you're curious how to strike the right balance between guest experience, security, this event's going to be perfect for you. So join us on August 11th at 11:00 AM Pacific, 2:00 PM Eastern. Invites will be in your inbox soon enough, but if you're already eager to sign up, Simone is going to share that registration link with you here and you'll find it up at the top to join our hospitable host, hospitable masterclass with Leo from SuperHawk. And last but certainly not least, yeah, take a look for, watch out for our new hospitable host podcast episode. It's going to be coming up sometime mid-August with Asaf Karman, the CEO of Turnover BMB. Him and I had a great chat about how to create a stellar cleaning team, some of the things to pay attention to. Can you have enough backups? So if you're struggling with finding good cleaners or managing, or you just want some tips to kind of help get over that hump, make sure to give this episode a listen. I promise it's good, not just because of this great setup that Pierre blessed me with here or Hospitable blessed me with, but you know, great quality and Asaf is absolutely wonderful. And that's it for me. I thank you all. I'll pass it along to you, Ben. Let us know what's going on there on the product front. And thank you so much to Ben and Sam, some of our engineers. Those guys have had so many interviews over the past week to try to help grow our team. We greatly appreciate that, brother. Thanks for all your hard work and, and not minding listening, having, listening to me on a couple of those calls as well.
Ben blew my record of interviews back to back. That's not, that's quite something to achieve, Ben.
It was, it was kind of self-inflicted. I messed up my own scheduling and I think I had six calls back to back with about a two-minute break between each one. But it was super awesome to meet some new people, you know, make some acquaintances and see if there's some great people out there that can join us in the team. So recruitment's been one of the main focuses of the team in the last couple of weeks, as Pierre shared. And the other one has been our ongoing improvement and consolidation cycle. So on recruitment, we've already touched quite heavily on that. You know, Pierre mentioned today, it takes time to find great colleagues. We found some great ones. We can't wait to introduce them all to you properly as they start to join the team. We've had 12 interviews, I believe, since the last town hall in the last two weeks. So yeah, huge shout out to Sam, to Costin, everyone on the engineering team who's, who's helped out and got stuck in with those. And as we shared, we're effectively kind of doubling, doubling the size of the engineering team and creating a product function as well, which we're, we're super excited about. But more importantly, it's going to unlock the ability for us to deliver more quicker and to a high standard. So yeah, some good things coming down the pipe as a result of this. And the last thing, just to kind of rehash that Pierre mentioned, because I think it is important. We spend a lot of time talking about Direct, our direct booking engine and website creator. And we haven't shared as many updates on that in the last town hall, the last couple of town halls actually. One because of this consolidation cycle that we're in. But I think the key thing to kind of call out here is that some of those hires that are coming on are coming on exclusively to work on Direct. So you can expect some good momentum on that Direct train as we start to, to onboard those new colleagues. And on the consolidation and improvement cycle. So as I shared last time, we're taking some time out of new feature development to work on some quality of life improvements and bug fixes. We've been working with our awesome customer services team, as Matthew mentioned, they, they really are truly, to try and figure out what's confusing customers, what's taking a long time to investigate, what's frustrating people and what can we do as an engineering team to help with that. So we're at 20 plus fixes and improvements so far, I think, and we, we're, we're not slowing down anytime soon. So we're still in that consolidation cycle. There is more stuff to come. We're also looking to improve and expand the tooling that we give to the customer services team so that they can investigate things easier and faster and we can help more customers as, as a result of that as well. You know, hopefully sometimes without having to, to involve engineering, although they are incredible. This customer services team does more than any other team I've worked with previously. So yeah, they're all incredible. Last time during the last town hall, I mentioned that we keep you up to date with some of those smaller changes, some of those smaller fixes that I didn't necessarily call out on the town hall. Some of you may have noticed that we have posted a pretty long changelog entry since then. If you haven't seen it, you can see it from within the app by going to Help and View Product Updates. Or you can go to changelog.hospitable.com. And that's going to give you a better view of what we've been up to, what we've been fixing, what we're still working on, some of those bigger items that we're improving as part of this consolidation week. So we'll continue to share updates on there. As I mentioned, we're not out of this consolidation cycle yet. So keep your eyes peeled and yeah, you should see some more great stuff coming in there. But just to call out a few, a few of the highlights that we're focusing on. Booking.com connection flow improvements is a big one. So a big thank you to Christian and Toby, two of our engineers who've been working on improving that connection flow process. So the customers who want to come in and connect their booking.com accounts understand, you know, what it is, how it's going to work, how they can connect that account, making it a little bit more kind of seamless than, than it was before. Other highlights, huge thank you to Costin and Sam for the work they're doing with, with channels. You may remember we talked, some big changes came in Verbo about a month ago now. And the team had to sort of scramble to, to put that integration back together, to keep it stable and to kind of build on, on what had changed. Costin and Sam have done some, some incredible work there, kind of building back up the capabilities that we had and ironing out any kinks that we had along the way and making sure that Verbo is a nice, stable channel for us. We've come a long way with that in, in the last month. There's also fixes across the board with messaging, smart locks. I saw there was a question in there about remote lock, which Matthew touched on as well. We are still kind of working on remote lock as well, as well as improving our existing Schlading code, smart lock integration to make sure that is all working 100% as, as it should be. And finally, one that's kind of close to my heart is making it clearer to customers, when is the right time to kind of merge your listings into a property? So you know, for those of you who are on multiple channels, you've got the same listing on Airbnb, Verbo and Booking.com. Most of you probably know, if you're on this call, you want to go ahead and merge those into a, into a property to take full advantage of, you know, sync capabilities, double booking protection, things like that. It could be clearer in the product, especially for new customers, what a property is, how it works, how to get those listings into a property. And you know, we can even go a little bit further and actually say, "Hey, we think these two listings may be linked." So another thing we're focused on for that consolidation cycle is just making it clearer when and how you want to merge those listings into, into a property. Yeah, so overall, we're wrapping up our recruitment, still ongoing, but we're, we're definitely on the, the better side of it now. We're looking forward to onboarding some new people into, into the engineering team, creating that product function. We're continuing with this improvement and consolidation cycle, probably for another week, maybe a little bit longer. And then we are super looking forward to getting back into feature development. I know we've shared with you previously that we're looking at iCal imports, remote lock integration and getting back onto Direct. So those are all things the team is, is definitely looking forward to getting back to. I think that's everything I've got for today for product. So I'll pass it back over to Pierre and Simone.
The beauty of recruitment is that immediately after you get to work, you start to work on onboarding. That's going to be quite the adventure to onboard literally a third of the company within a matter of weeks. Luckily, we have been prepared in the past few, few weeks for that. Simona, I'll let you do the intro.
Thank you, Pierre. Thanks all for the updates and now it's time for the Q and A session. I'm sure you've all been waiting for it. So please raise your hand in the app and shoot your questions. We'll invite you on stage. Oop, we have Lauren here. I've sent you an invite and you are now a speaker. Hi, Lauren.
Hi, Simona. Can you hear me? Hi, sorry, I'm not familiar with Clubhouse, so I'm still figuring this out. My question mainly is around the metrics feature. And I apologize if you talked about this before, I've been a little behind on seeing all of the updates. But are there any plans to create better reporting features, especially for hosts like myself who work with owners and have to calculate payouts according to a percentage of revenue?
That's why we're creating a product function.
Great, I'd love to hear that.
No, that's the thing that we've talked a lot internally. So there is an item on the roadmap basically about calculating it. I think there is even a poll ready to ask property management companies, how do you calculate your compensation, your percentage? So that we know basically what kind of thing we need to, to include into the different components. The problem is that it's not just that, to be, that needs to do to take a great product, really working on the user interface, working on the user experience. Since it's a new, completely new area of the product, because metrics needs to be completely revamped, basically where do we put those things? And there are a lot of product decisions. Currently, they're run by me, which is extremely inefficient. And that's why we need to have owners for those different items. To be clear, I think we are, I don't think that the two people that we're recruiting for product at this point in time are going to have the capacity to work on those type of native features. But I'm basically begging to be proven wrong. And I, I think there is definitely going to be a lot of interest into analytics and metrics moving, moving forward, especially because of, because it's tied to development of, of Direct. And it's also allows us to expand into another dimension of a product that we're particularly interested in, which is really this market for service developers. And you won't be able to recruit service providers, for the sales providers, sorry, without being able to assess their performance and what they bring. So for you as a property management company, how do you demonstrate value to a property owner? So that's, that's really one of the bigger items that we're looking at.
So I'm hearing you-
That's probably going to be for later.
So I'm hearing you say you're aware of it, it's kind of on your radar, but not immediate future, but probably something you will do down the line?
We'd love to, if we can, if we can nail down really building this product team, having the ability to unblock completely our development for the existing product and for Direct. I can assure you, I won't be spending a week without Matthew starting to tell me, "Yeah, there's a biggest objection on sales now, we need to absolutely get some analytics." We have people that are using on our end and they would love to make the switch to Hospitable once we're having, there's some, some better capacity. And you know, the support team saying, "Hey, we do this payment processing, this is great, but we need to facilitate their, their accounting." So everyone will basically go to me and tell me, "We need to do analytics, we need to do metrics and we need to do it really well in a way that is just, it doesn't need to include a lot of things. It just needs to be reliable and starting from, from somewhere." So Lauren.
What about, yeah, I appreciate your, your candor there. One more question on this. What about, is there any, have, have you talked at all about ability to, to access your existing metrics feature through APIs?
Very interesting. I don't think we've talked about that, no.
So I'll be candid, the reason I'm asking is because my husband is a computer engineer and he, he, he has written scripts for me to do all these things that I need done as of right now. And he's sitting across the table from me asking me to ask this, so that's why I asked this.
Has he taken a look at our API?
Has he taken a look at our job ads? That's what we say, Matthew.
But, but I, I do believe that there's some reservation financial details that come through in the API.
Yeah, but it's nowhere near what you get from the export. The export has actually a lot of great detail and you can trigger it through the UI and it's ready for even for 30 or 40 properties within seconds. It'd be great if I could do that programmatically.
How about webhooks?
Not enough still.
Still not enough because I thought the webhooks had a decent breakdown.
They have more, but it's not standard. That's the thing is that basically it works for, I don't, it's, it's not sufficient to basically have a, if we do something like for the, for the financial, for all the numbers, it needs to be basically ready for usage for an accounting. So an integration, that would unblock an integration with like Simplify, Zero Books. That's really what's, what's behind and you need to basically have a full understanding there.
Sure, but even just as a temporary workaround, I mean, I know you're doing some of those data.
Working around on money?
I'd better than absolutely nothing right now, right? But that's it, yeah. Have you, have you, have you taken a look at the webhooks? And I'm, I'm sorry, Lauren's husband, I don't want to refer to you as that, but you are.
I'm sorry, his name is Michael. I'm sorry.
Michael!
Hello. Yes, I don't remember, I don't think I looked at the webhooks. I looked at the API a good bit and I see, so what, what I would like as a developer, which would be really helpful, is if I could get the same CSV I get through the UI, just over the API. That would be huge.
I know.
We are, we are actually working-
Sorry, Michael, I'm very familiar with the problem.
We are, we are working with a team right now on enhancing our API and our API offering, so.
All right, well, I'm going to put that down as a feature request for the API then.
No, 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 but that's, that's really what's, what's core is that I think we'll probably start by the API before we're starting going into the proper user experience because simply working on the API helps us really validate- Because simply, uh, working on the API helps us really validate that the numbers are right. And from what I'm hearing, it's extremely odd. And that there is no true property management software that basically is reliable across all the channels that they integrate with, except maybe direct and then still. The, so, so that's really can be the first step and then we can bring it to the, to the, to the product. On our application with the appropriate charts, graphs and filters especially, uh, which is a bit overkill. For, for, for a lot of the reality of the user scenario. Um, so I think the API is really the first thing to unblock. To be clear, on our side, on our own database, uh, we have gigabytes worth of data points for every item that we can get access to. Whether it's for Airbnb, for Verbo, uh, for booking.com. So for example, for Airbnb, we have a clear visibility into which jurisdiction has charged which tax on which, for which reservation. And definitely, we, I, I, I'm convinced that there is a lot of work, a little bit of work that we can do. To make that fair and to make that accessible again to uh, to, to our customers. But it is, it is a, the, the problem that we have is really the way it was built. Um, which is not taken, ticking into account really that user scenario so far. It will happen.
Okay, well, thank you for the background. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome, Lauren. And Michael. My, what is, what is Michael working on? What is this language? What are the frameworks that you're working on?
I don't know, I'm gonna let him answer that.
Uh, for, for this particular project, it's, it's really just a, a simple Python script.
Yeah.
It's, because you know, I couldn't do all the things I needed through the API, so the entry point is I log into the webpage. I go to the metrics tab and I download the report, then I upload it into uh, AWS S three and then I run my script.
Okay, and professionally, any language preferences?
Uh, I'm a big fan of Python. It's really easy to learn and use and very well supported by the community.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Man, we are connected to so many developers, Pierre. When are we going to start tapping into those resources?
One day, one day, we rule the world. Just one thing at a time, please. Thank you, thank you, Michael, uh, for your answers and for escaping that, Lauren. Jordan.
Thank you, yeah.
Hey, hey, uh, yeah, I'm, I have no idea what they were talking about in the last uh, round there, so uh.
Fantastic, thank you so much, Jordan.
I'm not going to talk about sequel or any of that stuff, um.
Look at you, sequel, you know that.
Yeah, yeah, um, so my question uh, is really in regards to direct booking. Um, are you able to kind of just walk us through? How, I know that just launched recently and I just, I just made a, a website the other day. About how payment processing, taxes, um, all those things are gonna kind of work.
Matthew? Oh, me.
Yeah, no, I got it, I got it. So, yeah, so essentially, so you want to know how payment processing and taxes, how are those going to be? As, how are those going to work with this?
Yeah, so like, yeah, based on like, you know, wherever you're, yeah, based on like your location, is it gonna? Like, hey, my property, right, one of the properties I have is in North Carolina, is it gonna say, hey, that's in North Carolina? You know, and identify that, so on, so forth.
If you'd like us to. So essentially, we're gonna have two offerings that come from, uh, we'll, we'll have a couple, I think three offerings. But essentially two offerings for you, where you'll have the direct basic, which is plug and play, your Stripe account. You're going to manage everything on your own, we're just going to use us as a conduit to get those reservations. And be able to go ahead and get, process payments for your guests. And then the direct premium offering is going to be a more in line on what you're speaking to right there. So to start, you could, you'll be using our Stripe account, so we'll be the merchant of record, so you won't have that responsibility to manage payments. On top of that, we will be working with Avalara, who can help. File, remit, even register in any area that you'll need to. So if your property is up in North Carolina, we'll fire. We'll file with the county or the city or even the state in some cases, right, and all those people you have to. And then on that, we'll also be able to go ahead and collect and remit those taxes for you. And then the final piece of that, well, one, there'll be auto host as well connected, so you'll be able to include guest screening. Get all the features that you have there with auto host to make sure that you are qualifying your direct booking guests as best as you possibly can. And then there will be the option for insurance, so for example, uh, with Superhog, you'll be able to go ahead and get, you know, insurance for. The stay, insurance for your guest as an add-on, I believe as well. But we'll be offering those basic, th- those four items in addition to the direct booking website. So you'll have the direct basic where it's, hey, I got everything set up, I got my Stripe account, I'm good to go, I don't want any of those bells and whistles. Or the direct premium offering, which will be more like creating your own OTA within hospitable. Where we're going to process a lot of the things that you would have processed on Airbnb or Verbo directly.
Okay, and obviously there'd probably be a, a premium for, for that.
Absolutely, yeah, we're paying for those, we're paying for those services, so you know, as much as we love you all, we'd, we'd love to pay for. We are gonna have to pass along those costs to you, um, in order to utilize those services. But there's going to be some advantages, like for example with auto host, you know, I think right now it's twenty-five properties or twenty properties that they have for a minimum. So you won't, you'll be able to use their services, um, you know, even just as somebody who's got a couple of properties. Making sure your direct bookings are, you know, well taken care of. And even with Stripe, we know s- some places in the world, some companies have difficulties getting that Stripe account. Um, we'll be able to do that for you so that you can rest assured, let us manage chargebacks and some of those other things. But again, you know, well, we're gonna help, uh, we're gonna ask you to share some of the costs that we're facing there.
Yeah, sure, that, yeah, that makes sense, um.
So, sorry, Jordan, just to interrupt, because I think Matthew is on the spot here, but um, it's actually going to be cheaper. For you to use merchant, to use hospitable as a merchant of record. Rather than basically if you wanted to have the same features on being, uh, being the customer yourself, obviously because effect of scale. Uh, but also we're going to be very attractive uh, in terms of pricing. Uh, for property owners and hosts that basically are just starting on direct booking website, do not have, have any tooling ready for it. And for which is really the best fit for this kind of turnkey, um, turnkey solution. What it allows us to have the turnkey in being the merchant of record is that we're actually gonna have a guest fee that actually would pro- would cut, will, um. Will pass along the fee to them, to the guests directly, so that there is not much difference. In your, in your payout yourself, whether basically using Airbnb or using the direct booking website, that is a better deal for you. And for your guests alike. So it actually will be cheaper for you to use um, the turnkey solution. Uh, compared to just doing it, doing everything yourself.
Yeah, sure, that makes sense. And then when is that, when are you guys looking at, like, fully launching that? Because I know I made a li- like quote unquote live site the other day, I just didn't know how usable that is.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what Ben and the team are going to pick up work on next, is finishing the payment processing piece. We already have a few hosts who are in beta, who are processing some direct booking payments. Uh, once that is taken care of, I believe the auto host integration has already had a ton of work developed. We don't have a good timeline for you to share, um, but those are the, you know, a- as Lauren asked, like, what are the things in a roadmap? Essentially, it's payment processing and everything, direct booking. And then working with a couple, you know, an outside agency to help us with remote locks and some of that support there as well, uh, managing our existing smart lock integrations. So unfortunately, not a good timeline, unless Pierre's got one for you, but I bet he probably.
Yeah, I mean, the only other question I had on that was like, I have some folks, like, uh, you know, family members or other folks that you're like. More willing to give a, you know, try and get rid of that service fee for them, that'd be more willing to book direct with them. Um, so is there a way that you can change, change the actual fee?
How, how would you be accepting their payment, right? So you got, you know, let's say your cousin comes over and says, hey, I want to go ahead and stay. Would you be still billing them through Stripe? Or would you be doing something, hey, I'm going to take a PayPal friends and family type deal?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if I'm doing direct book, it, it really doesn't matter. Um, but yeah, I'd probably just do it. I, I'd prefer to do through Stripe, so that way I have, you know, tax information.
Ah, okay, so you're still gonna charge him? Because that was, you know, so what we hear is sometimes like, okay, so I got a buddy, I'm going to just go ahead and do something on the side PayPal and not be.
Yeah.
Fully above water, um, so I was wondering, you know, in that case. I, I believe you'll have the ability to adjust fees. I'm sure that eventually we're gonna have ability to add discounts and things along those lines to your direct booking. I believe we already have the option to add discounts within there right now.
Yeah, so I'm thinking about like, for example, Airbnb's charges like what, fifteen percent guest service fee-ish? Um, like to get rid of that, I'd still probably charge the taxes, just maybe not the guest service fee.
And I bet that's something that would probably come along a lot later, because we're either gonna have one track or the other. So you're either with the direct basic or you're taking care of all that, and if you're using premium, yeah, I'm not exactly sure how that's worked out now, I think that's something we've, we've dove into just yet.
Okay, I'm rounds complete. Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thanks so much for asking.
Thank you, Jordan. Sima?
Thanks, Jordan. Um, Maribel, I sent you an invite, you should be on stage now. Anyone else, please raise your hand, come to stage, it's fun. Ask your questions. Don't be shy.
Can give me tips on being a dad.
Did that, did Zach send any questions over to you, Simona, that, that we could take from the audience?
Yes, uh, Sam asked if it's still possible to invest.
Yes, it's still very early to invest. Um, so without doing any kind of general solicitation. Um, but yeah, you can absolutely sign up on invest.hospitable.com, uh, which is where. Uh, we have so, hospitable has so far fundraised seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Exclusively from, uh, from customers, uh, for customers and actually employees, families of employees. Uh, which is relatively fun to have. Um, and uh, and yeah, that's basically what we contemplate will be the main instruments for investing into our company. Uh, because it's basically completely open, uh, to, uh, to everyone that is a qualified investor. So if you are in the US, if you have a tax residency in the US, you need to be an accredited investor, which come with its own. Uh, with its own set of requirements. Um, if you are located outside of the United States, if your tax residency is outside of the, of the United States. Uh, you can, you're actually free to invest uh, into the company. Um, and I would say that basically. We are, the, the company has been growing fifty percent in the past, in the past six months and first, first of July. Uh, the valuation has not. Um, so the, the business is still growing, but the valuation is exclusively dependent of the. On the, on the amount uh, invested by investors. And so therefore that basically means it's always going to be cheaper to, to invest compared to the real valuation of the company. In case of an acquisition like what happened with Avancio and Track uh, earlier this week. Uh, so the, the, the real business valuation at a conservative idea would be around twenty-six million dollars. Uh, for a company that's uh, gonna, going to make four million dollars a year on recurring revenue. Um, we, we currently, we can invest at fifteen point eight million dollars. Um, so that basically means that if we are basically selling, if I were to sell the business today at market value. Uh, that market value, which is not really the, uh, something to agree upon by the, by the potential buyer anyway. Uh, and not, definitely not by the seller, um, would mean that basically you do an outsized. Um, and you have an outsized return on your investment and you are being rewarded in any case. As an early investor based on the price, uh, that you, that you're investing in. So that still is possible, that's still early in my view. Um, and uh, and yeah, I'm still due to actually, I know there are some investors that are in the call. Um, I'm still due, I know, to uh, send the investor update for the first half of the year to recap on everything. Um, I couldn't do that because of the parts of the initiative and I wish I would have been able to do it, but unfortunately that was just too chaotic. Uh, to, to handle that, but I'm looking forward to sending the investor update to everyone, so. Even though we don't actually have the obligation to do so, I'm still sending an investor update. Uh, whether you were investing, you know, the, the minimum, which is two thousand five hundred, or you are our largest investor. Uh, who, if I'm correct, put, uh, invested, decided to invest three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, into the business on his own, uh, himself, just a, a hospitable customer for, for a few years. So, um, yeah, I'm sorry, Simona, I went for a very long answer.
That's good, thank you. So short answers, yes, you can still invest, go ahead. Um, but okay, so we have, um, sorry if I mispronounced your name, Onaje on stage.
Hi, yes, uh, Onaje here. I just had a question, y'all might have already answered this, so my apologies, I'm jumping into the room late. Uh, wanted to know about any update or upgrades to the direct bookings website and possibly taking payments? Uh, payment processing, um, upgrades, i- is that on the table? Is there a timeline with that?
Yep, that's the entire point, that's why we're recruiting. Um, and so we are basically the, having a, recruiting a dedicated team to help us. Ship that product, finish uh, payment processing and basically be able to maintain and iterate on it. So, uh, currently we're in a consolidation phase, that means we're kind of more likely to look. Into the areas of the product where our engineering team can have the biggest impact on our current customers. Uh, and then basically once, um, a large number of those issues have been sorted out, we're going back onto developing those new features. For us, uh, we currently have five developers that are working on the products. Um, we are very much looking forward to finishing the month of August with ten uh, developers and then we'll be able to have a better roadmap. That's not going to be hijacked as soon as there is a breaking change from another integration we're having. Uh, or some kind of other issues affecting our application and affecting our customers today. Um, so we are very much looking forward to rec- to resume development. I think we are probably one month, two months of work on it, but that's also the. Uh, what's something that we're working on in part as recruitment is that we're also recruiting a product team that's going to help us really. Um, sp- uh, like build the specs uh, for the features that remain building. And that's going to be, uh, and allow us to ship a lot faster the remaining features. So I appreciate, Onaje, your first word, I wish, uh, payment processing would have been released. Unfortunately, we need to be realistic, uh, we very much prefer to support the product that we have today and then work on new features. Uh, rather than basically sacrificing our entirety of a customer base, uh, being frustrated. If we can, just for the sake of a future feature that may not be of interest to, to every single one of our customers. So that's the reason why we decided to go on a, on a consolidation week. Uh, that's been the case for a few more weeks and that are actually, uh, in the case, we spent a lot of that time on interviews, on recruitment. Uh, to grow our team by fifty percent, which is quite a bit of an effort. You're welcome, Onaje.
Thank you. Hi, Detran, you're on stage.
Hello, um, I had one question about automated, automated messages, um, in their conditions. Um, I have scenarios where like I have my first, my first morning message that's sent out around ten o'clock in the morning. But every once in a while a guest would message me before prior to ten, and I've already had communications from them that morning. And I would like to be able to not send that message out because I've already made a first touch base of the week. But it doesn't have, I don't have anything that shows any kind of conditions around if certain things are happening, don't send these messages out.
I'm sorry, I, I lost you there with that first part. So if you, what message are we speaking of specifically? That's what I missed. Was this like a new reservation message?
So this is like the, the first morning after, after their check-in.
Okay.
And I've already spoken to them prior to that message being sent out. I don't want it to be sent out because I've already spoken to them that day already.
Okay, is, is that the one that you find most often happening or is it kind of across the board?
It's that one and the, if someone, I have, I have instant booking on and I get a, someone books that doesn't. Qualify for instant booking, I would get a inquiry and that, that message is sent. And then when I approve them, another, they're, they're, the booking message sent. So it's basically reiterating the first thing that I said the first time, so it kind of sounds redundant and doesn't seem like it's. A real person writing it, things of that nature. Like if, if inquiry booking message goes out. Don't send a new booking message because it's the exact same information.
Well, those should be, the, so, you know, a part of a best practice, those should be vastly different right there, right? If somebody's sending you an inquiry, we want to let them know that we received the inquiry, maybe an answer or something that we're going to get back to you. Whereas if they book that confirmation, you know, or they request to book. Yeah, you know, those should have each their own specific purpose, request to book, hey, I want to make sure you have all that information. Uh, you know, we'll process this within, as soon as we can, you should expect back a few hours. Um, now I understand that some of that may sound a bit automated, but really, within each of those, you want. To let the guest know that, hey, we've received this, or this is in that stage and I can confirm that we've received this each in its unique stage. So maybe adjusting those messages so that they're working specifically for those scenarios? The, with those messages as well, there is an option to delay. Where, you know, if you can delay the inquiry message, say fifteen minutes. And if you actually go in and reply to the guest within those first fifteen minutes, we'll stop those messages from going out. But that's only if you actually go in and reply, if they sent an inquiry and then they, you know, instantly request a book, you're still gonna have those automated messages going out. And I would, I, you know, I, have you, if you, unless you've lost some guests because of that. I would highly recommend using those and again, just, just replying to that, hey, I got your inquiry, it's received, I replied everything typically within. You know, an hour or so, so I will be right back with you. Or, you know, hey, the request to book has processed. All we need to do is, is click the button, uh, we'll take a look at your review and, and, you know, get back to you soon. Now with the first morning message, are you sending, are you just on Airbnb or are you across channels?
Across channels.
So are you using our inbox to send your messages or are you going directly to the channels themselves?
Um, it depends on which one clicks up first. I get notifications on Airbnb or, or booking.com. And I get the hospitable message, so generally I try to go through hospitable, but sometimes I end up messaging through Airbnb itself.
So the, the reason I ask is when you are in that inbox, you do have. So the, the reason I ask is when you are in that inbox, you do have the ability to say like, delete that first morning message?
Mm-hmm. I do, I do know that that's available sometimes and, and it, and generally when it's early in the morning, that's not what I'm thinking about. To delete the, the first morning message, cause I've already spoken to them.
Yeah, well, and that's, I mean, you know, to think about it, like how, hey, you sent a message within what timeframe? How long would it take for us to not send that message? Did you send a message six hours ago? Should we do it then? You know, there's, there's a lot of different moving parts in there. So I don't think, we don't have a solution where, hey, we've already spoken to them, you know, within the past few hours. So don't send the automated message. Um, you know, again, uh, my suggestion would be to either adjust the wording if something's coming up often enough that you feel like, hey, even though i- it, you know, we're at this point, or just using the inbox to delete that message is gonna be your best option. When you get that Airbnb notification, just open up the hospitable app, man, and, and you're good to go from there.
I need to turn off notifications from the Airbnb side, so it only is hospitable.
Either that, or like I said, keep those Airbnb notifications, but no, all right, Airbnb, I'm going right into hospitablebooking.com. I'm going right into hospitable managing there. And especially from, you know, the app, it should be really easy for you to just scroll down, delete that message, or even delay it, give it an extra day if they're staying a couple extra. You know, just, hey, I just want to check in and make sure all's well once again with you.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
That, Dithron, if I may say, you, you may also be able to reduce the impact, uh, by simply scheduling this message earlier. Uh, so if you're sending it at 10, that gives a bit more time to the guest to basically send a message. Um, I, I do appreciate it's, it's not gonna solve the problem to escalating, and I think that's an interesting problem for our product team to solve. Um, the, the thing is, is yeah, simply maybe sending it a bit earlier at seven in the morning. Um, so that's, you know, the, your customers may, your clients, your guests may wake up to that message, uh, rather and respond to it. Rather than basically escalating a problem proactively before that message is sent.
Yeah, that might be the easiest route to go also.
Probably would be the easiest, yeah, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate you.
Dithron, great rest of your day. And we have, uh,
We have Lauren.
Unusual, we have two Laurens. Uh, they are both irreplaceable. Lauren Pitts, how are you doing?
Yes, hello. It's been a while. How is everyone? Congratulations, Pierre.
Very welcome. Thank you very much.
What lovely news. Um, okay, yeah, so, um, I, uh, I apologize if this has already been like, uh, this fix or this, um, feature has been released. I didn't have a chance to, to check, but I haven't noticed it. I was just wondering, um, about the ability to have the we are away message where certain times of day, we can have that automated message go out that says, hey, you know, our normal hours are from this time to this time, we'll respond to you, blah, blah. If it's an emergency, call this number type, type of thing.
You have not missed anything.
I'm gonna leave that to Pierre because I've been getting yelled at this feature request since I started back in 2018.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my has, um, my, okay, now that seems to be better. Sorry, I unplugged myself. And so I could not hear the first part of the, of Lauren's question, but basically, uh, there is a paternal condition that's going in my brain. Basically, it's very familiar with this particular question. Um, this, you have not missed any kind of updates. We have not released this kind of message. We are not working on that message, that actually, on that particular type of auto response. Um, we believe strongly that, um, if you're, the, the best, the only way to basically make that message appealing is really to say yes or to answer the questions of the guest directly. And we want to help you basically by ensuring that we can uh, really help you put humans in front of those conversations, um, rather than basically circulating, uh, messages that may not be necessary or be helpful to from the guest perspective. So that's one other thing that honestly, it's like the edit button on Twitter, it will never happen. We will never, ever send a message, uh, out of office hours. That's a no-go. I will have left this company before. Simply because that's not, that's automation, that's not, um, adding value to the guest. And to be able to ship a product that's gonna be, uh, delivering value to you, we need to first and foremost deliver value to your guest now. Your guest may find value in that message still because they know where to reach out to, but they will always send a message, uh, to the WhatsApp, uh, phone number. Uh, or to any kind of contact details that you're, contact detail that you're sharing with them, um, in that office. I would also ask, tell you that you obviously have been looking to the off-platform policy from Airbnb. And that's the type of thing that they are looking forward to ban, uh, as a result of basically that off-platform. So basically not you proactively, uh, sharing details, um, contact details, uh, to the, to the guest, including, uh, while they have secured their, their booking. So that kind of change, um, makes me feel like there can be a lot of questions, uh, moving forward in the product, in this space. Um, but that's really, uh, yeah, for, for us, really, there is, there are very few items like that that are absolute no-gos. Um, but this is definitely one of them.
Okay, that's an update because I definitely have been on calls before where, um, hosts have, uh, requested that. And at the time, you guys were saying, yeah, that would be something to put on the, the, um, the list of, you know, new feature requests. Um, and also, that's also news to me that Airbnb will not allow in the future, even for a confirmed reservation, um, a phone number that to be shared. They're gonna like redact that throughout the entire experience.
So, yeah, the, the, this is something that's being, that's new. I think it's circulated a few weeks ago, but they really do not want, uh, to basically, they're trying to defend themselves against basically the, the web of direct bookings. Uh, and so basically, um, a lot of people have been, you know, asking for the guest email addresses. Um, uh, so asking guests to fill out forms, uh, call, email, or otherwise contact, uh, via a non-Airbnb communication service. Uh, would actually be causing a, a risk of shutting down, uh, you know, would create a case for Airbnb to, to shut down the Airbnb accounts. So there are a lot of things that basically are gonna be prohibited, uh, up prohibited already, uh, at this point in time.
Okay. And, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, no, no, but, uh, so I want to basically add that to the list, but I'm not sure I can do that. Uh, I will send that to Simona so that she can edit, uh, to the, to this room. Um, the, yeah, but that, so that's basically Airbnb's own problem. And for us, yeah, the out of office hours, I think, would be a missed opportunity of out of office message, uh, would be a missed opportunity to actually, other days, something to do in terms of, you know, answering the guest questions. There is something to do in terms of escalation. There is something to do in terms of, you know, uh, actually delivering value to the guest rather than just simply, uh, having an out of office reply, which I believe is a bit misaligned, uh, with the, the short-term rental, uh, the expectation of short-term rentals. Uh, that's my view. I can change my view, but I've been holding this view for quite some time.
Well, I mean, I, I will say that as a host, if I am, I have a very small, like, you know, team, so I don't have that many units. But if I'm sleeping, then, um, my guests do need to call another phone number to reach me urgently. In which case, you know, it's gonna like ring my phone. So if they just send a message like, hey, we're locked out and it's 2:00 AM, I'm probably not gonna hear that while I'm sleeping. So to me, that's a worst experience, that they just send a bunch of messages and there's no response. Then there's an automated message that says, hey, these are after hours. If it's urgent, you know, um, and call this number. Or call the number in the house manual, or call the number that's, you know, on the placard on the wall, you know, and you can reach us right away. So to me, that would be a better experience than someone who's panicking, forgot that there's a number and is just not getting a response for like an hour.
And I, and I can totally appreciate that. And that's obviously the, the, the case that you have in mind when you receive request that feature, which totally makes sense. Um, what I'm saying is that when we look at it from an engineering perspective, and you're going through a step that is basically to qualify the problem and to find what is the best answer. So obviously, you have a guest that's locked out, you want them to be unlocked to, to gain access into the property on the day of the check-in, no problem with that. What if they're telling you simply a message that, hey, we have checked in, everything is fine, and you say reply to them, sorry, we can't, we are not. The, this is more likely to happen than not, and I believe this is one of the reasons why you will spontaneously want to shut this down. Shut this message automation down because it's more likely to be coming at the face of a guest that is saying that everything went fine. Um, that rather than actually the one case in a blue moon where it's, where it is gonna be really needed to contact directly guest. What I believe is the more, so it's not faster, but it's more elegant, is really to be able to highlight, um, on the messages, what exactly is the most, um, what are the most, uh, what is worth, uh, an escalation? Uh, so for example, we are locked out there. It's very, it's relatively easy to detect that this is a very complex problem. And then trigger a message, please contact us immediately on the phone call on that phone, on that phone number, uh, so that we can, uh, we can unlock it. That, I believe in a more ignorant way, and if there is a guest that basically said, we have checked in properly, everything is fine. Thank you very much for the flowers on the table or something like that. That,
I see, I see what you're saying.
That guest, that guest experience has not been interfered with, with a message that sound like a generic customer support. We, I would not like you as a customer to receive a message from us, uh, that will tell you, sorry, out of office hours. I can tell you, we have experienced doing that. Uh, and those are always professionals in the hospitality space. They are more likely to go es- to escalate 50 times, uh, when they are faced with something that you are not available. Um, because at the end of the day, a customer doesn't care whether you're available or not. They have a question, they have an issue, and they need to, uh, it's, this needs to be, uh, to meet a human.
Okay. I see your point there. Yeah. Okay. So maybe we can just create custom messages. Okay. Thank you, guys.
For me, that's better, that's a better revenue. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
And we are the hour? Simona?
Yes, we are. Think it's time to wrap it up.
Yes, I think I have, have a baby to go back to, uh, at this point in time. And my partner was amazing, has been looking after her. But, uh, I think we need to share our duties, uh, in that regard. Thank you very much. A pleasure to be, to be back from Paternity Live. When is the, it's gonna be the next, uh, 10, oh, two weeks from now, that's gonna be on,
10th.
On the 10th of August.
August 10th.
August 10th.